I'm welcoming viewers around the world, viewers in Massachusetts and viewers over the social media. My name is Ronald Bonart and I am the host for the show called Dialogue with the Candidate. Dialogue with the Candidate is a show that has been bringing by MCTV which is multicultural television network in order to inform the public about who are running for office. Having the candidate to come to our platform, they can talk about the political agenda they're playing and how they're going to improve people's life. So today we are glad and fortunate to have with us Mr. Ken Clifton.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ken, for accepting our invitation to the show. So, we know that you have been a town councillor since 2008. So that means it's a while. So how about you go and, you know, walk us through your journey, let's say back from Saint Kitts and up to here. So, you have the mic.
Well, first of all, I want to thank you for your very kind invitation and for being so gracious to me. Certainly appreciate it. And I also want to commend MCTV for its civic engagement and the wonderful contribution that you have been making to our community. So I want to thank you for that. So I was born on the island of Saint Kitts, which is in the Caribbean. And my mom was an inspiration. She was like a political hero in the village where I was raised. I immigrated to America still in my early teens. And I finished high school, attended university, graduated from law school. And my wife and I, we've raised our two young sons. Well, one is now a senior engineering student. And my youngest son is a freshman who's interested in architecture to some extent. We have had wonderful opportunities. We have been blessed. And so I'm motivated by wanting to ensure that my fellow residents experience the same opportunities. Them and their children to get the chance to experience the American dream as well. So after graduating university, I returned to Saint Kitts and Nevis, which is the official name of the country. And I joined the public service. I eventually became the youngest permanent secretary in the government. A permanent secretary is the head of a department. So still in my twenties, I was heading a ministry, the Ministry of Tourism, Trade and Development. And also during that stint, I was posted to the United Nations to represent Saint Kitts and Nevis and also to the embassy in Washington DC. So it has been a wonderful experience. So my wife and I then moved, after I resigned from the public service in Saint Kitts, we moved to Randolph, Massachusetts.
Oh, that's great. So that shows us a lot of, you know, experience and from, you know, your country. When I say a country, from Saint Kitts, Nevis to here, so that's, you know, a lot of work. And we know that, for instance, since 2008, it's about 11 years since you've been an elected official. So what is the, what are your motivations?
Well, first of all, when I moved to Randolph, I was welcomed with open arms. My wife and I were embraced. Our sons were born here in this country. And I was always motivated by, since as a little boy growing up in Saint Kitts, to help folks who traditionally have been left out, who have been marginalized. And so Randolph provided the perfect opportunity. Because Randolph is a beautiful mosaic with wonderful people from all over the world. In fact, I was campaigning, going house to house just yesterday. And within two blocks, I had met families that were from at least 25 to 30 countries from around the world. So it's, there's a multiplicity of cultures and religions and races and so on that occupy this beautiful treasure that is called Randolph. Physically, again, we're perfectly located. We're just about 20, 25 minutes away from Boston. We're close to the highways. And I'm very confident that if we continue to work together in unison, we could be that shining city on the hill. And so I'm motivated and I'm inspired. I see myself as sort of a bridge between the many cultures, the new immigrants on one hand and town government on the other hand. Because as you would appreciate, sometimes new immigrants are not as familiar with the government process. And over the years, I've endeavored to get my fellow residents, not just immigrants, to understand that it is essentially a social contract. You pay taxes and government has the responsibility to ensure that adequate services are extended to our residents.
Okay. And other thing I would like to ask is, we know that based on your, you know, 11 years of experience, you're well-known on, you know, fighting and trying to address issues that affect the Randolph community. And one of the things that we can focus on, and I would like to know your position, it's about, you know, the Holbrook, you know, transfer station. So what is your position on that matter?
Perfect question. Perfect timing. The fact is, for a decade now, we have been fighting to stop the Holbrook transfer station. The Holbrook transfer station is really a convoluted way of saying, a dump site will be, or is being proposed to be established on the border of Randolph. Essentially, in the midst of our population center. And it would include hundreds of trucks a day carrying thousands and thousands of tons of solid waste through our neighborhoods. So clearly, it would cause a dramatic increase in congestion. And so we have been opposing this monstrosity based on the potential impacts on our health, our children's health, welfare, safety, the environment, including, as I said before, traffic congestion, noise, odor, pest, you name it. You name it. It, you know, it would dramatically impact the quality of life of our citizens. And so we have been united in opposing this travesty. And I've been honored to have been leading the effort. And so on September 18th, for the first time in 10 years, in a dramatic reversal of fortunes, the Holbrook Planning Board denied site plan for the transfer station, which was a magnificent victory for the people of Randolph and for the people of Holbrook and Braintree. But of course, we expect this decision to be challenged by TLA. But you could imagine how the community would have felt after fighting for so many years. I mean, I have led one-man demonstration. I've led community-wide demonstrations. I've led multi-community-wide demonstrations, including Braintree and Holbrook and so on. We've had several community meetings. We've had press releases and so on and so on. Just imagine over 10 years, which is over 4,000 months, I have been calculating, if my math is correct. But it has been quite an experience. And tribute must be paid to the residents of Randolph, to the residents of Braintree and Holbrook. And I keep emphasizing residents because it's not just citizens. There are many people who are permanent residents or other status who have been part of this amazing movement to ensure that the health and the well-being of our children is secured. So we've been very happy that there has been a change of fortunes.
Thank you for the answer, Mr. Ken. So I just would like to remind all the viewers, you are listening to Dialogue with the Candidate. And Dialogue with the Candidate, as I mentioned before, it's a show comes from MCTV, which is multicultural television network. So we invited people who are running for office. They can come here and share their political agenda and their plan to improve people's life and tackle issues that people facing. So we have with us today, Mr. Ken Clifton, and he's running for town council in Randolph. So we're going to continue with the dialogue, Mr. Ken. So we're going to talk about another issue that Randolph is facing. And the issue is going to be about schools. So I know you are familiar with, you know, the school system in Randolph in terms of the Randolph High School. So what are some issues the school facing and what is your plan, you know, to tackle?
Thank you for that question because that is, that's an issue that is very close to my heart. But before I get, before I respond, if I may just also raise this very vaccine issue that has been impacting the residents of Randolph. And that is the water issue.
Okay, yeah, that's one of the issues that made all the candidates talk. And I'm glad you're going to be elaborated on that issue as well.
Fantastic. So for many months, and some would say longer, the residents of Randolph have been experiencing brown water, cloudy water, and some say smelly water. And so this has been going on for many, many months, as I indicated. And there has been social media gossiping back and forth and so on and so on. And so I got tired of the residents not being treated, in my view, with the respect that they deserve. And so with one of my council colleagues, Councilor Katrina Hoff Laman, I organized a community meeting dedicated solely to the water issues. And so that entailed bringing the experts, from the town manager to the head of the Department of Public Works, to the head of the Health Department, town attorney, and our water consultant. I brought them together with the community. And it was one of the largest community meetings in recent time. So it provided a safe space, a perfect opportunity for residents to get their questions answered, their concerns addressed, and to offer suggestions. And it was highly successful. Obviously, it was very, what I describe as animated and very spirited. So it was quite, it was quite a dramatic meeting. On one occasion, one resident originally from Barbados, who brought one of his filters that was literally black. And so his appearance was extremely dramatic. And there was a lot of back and forth. And that was the idea of having, providing an opportunity for our residents to have that direct inner connection with the leadership of the town and those who are responsible for the water supply. And so in summary, it has laid a path for further discussions so that we could ultimately resolve this particular issue. Now back to the youth. I guess a lot of my history perhaps is reflected in how I try to be a good representative. In high school, I was an athlete. I received an academic and athletic scholarship to attend universities. I ran track in university and I played football. So I understand some of the issues that our youth are experiencing. And of course, it helps that I raised two young men who were boys at some time. And that mixed with my Caribbean upbringing, where there was tremendous emphasis on discipline. And so sometimes I have a very difficult, I have the hard conversation with the youth of our community. I see them like my sons and my daughters. And so I always let them know that I'm not trying to give them a hard time, but I'm trying to have a conversation. And sometimes I have to say things that they might not like. But it's best for them to hear it from me than to hear it from the police or some other authority. And that's why I pushed so hard for many years for the town to eventually build that intergenerational community center, which is a $14 million enterprise, so that our youth can have a safe space and a wonderful environment to engage in productive activities. Again, we don't want that community center to be just a place where sports are played, but where you could be mentored, where you could be nurtured. We have, we've had workshops on how to prepare a resume, how to harness and how to improve your interviewing skills, which you could probably be giving a lecture in that particular area. So I think it's a wonderful opportunity for our youth to engage in much more productive activities. Also, I've established a rapport with much of the youth. We've had a number of meetings between our youth and our police department, which has been very responsive in helping our youth to understand that the police, they are our brothers and sisters. There are some in the community who would try to create an acrimonious relationship between the police and certain segments of the society. But the truth is, the police plays a critical role in the community. They're not to be feared. They're to be seen as an extension of the community. And I think to date, no institution is perfect, but I think they have been making a wonderful effort in making sure that all of the community is properly and professionally served. So the youth, I mean, they are our leaders of tomorrow. And as I said, I see the community as youth, just like I see my son and my, both of my sons. And so there is that connectivity that I've tried to establish many years. It's not unusual for me to just, I'm walking and I see a couple of young men and I just engage them in conversation. Ask them, "Where are you from?" "That's Jamaica." I say, "Oh huh, so you're a Yari huh?" And automatically he would relax because he would automatically...
See we're related.
See how we are so connected, how we are so related. And I explained to him that I was born in Saint Kitts, but I've been to Jamaica. And we're really related, to use your word. So yes, the youth, they have a critical role to play in our society.
Thank you, Mr. Ken, to answer the question, like the challenge youth in Randolph High School facing. Because it's, you know, as you say, youth, they are, you know, the future leaders. So let's say you tackle the issues, you plan to help them and in the future, in return, that would, you know, make them more engaged and help the society, like having a better society in the future. So based on all the, you know, answers you give, you talk about, you know, you go to knock doors and it's very diverse based on the answer you give in Randolph. So I know based on that, I can say you have strong relationship with, you know, many groups, you know, in Randolph. When I say group, I'm talking about communities and ethnic groups. So let's talk a little bit about your relation with the Haitian community.
Yeah. Well, I think, I think everybody pretty much know, everybody pretty much knows that I have a special relationship with the Haitian community. And it did not just happen overnight. There's a historical perspective and development about that particular relationship. You know, I can recall as a young boy, growing up in Saint Kitts, and my parents would teach us and they would tell us about Haiti, how important a role that Haiti played in the historical development of the Caribbean. They would always remind me that, hey, had it not been for Haiti, the islands in the Caribbean, and to some extent, America would not have been, slavery would not have been eradicated at the time that it was. And so for us, growing up around the time, Haiti was perceived as the big sister island in the Caribbean. And so there was that historical knowledge. We were also very proud that, I'm not sure if you're aware, but one of your first presidents, Henri Christophe, was actually born in Saint Kitts before he traveled through Grenada and ended up in Haiti and became one of your first presidents and became the first king of Haiti. So Saint Kitts, at least we've given Haiti something. So it's that, it's against that backdrop that my representation here in Randolph, which includes representing many Haitians, there was a very smooth transition because I was prepared as a boy to understand that we were all brothers and sisters. In fact, a lot of members, a lot of my Haitian constituents, many have thought and still think that I'm Haitian.
Okay.
You know? And I've said to them that, you know, maybe I was not born in Haiti, but we are all Haitians. You know, considering the critical role that Haiti has played. And I also reminded them that when our ancestors were brought across on those slave ships from West Africa, across the Middle Passage, our ancestors were dropped off in Jamaica, Trinidad, Saint Kitts, Haiti, South Carolina, who knows? So, you know, we're all related, potentially. We're all related and there's this common bond that will never be broken. And, and so, you know, today we stand on the shoulders of great men and women, whether it would be Henri Christophe, Trusseau Lovature, Harriet Tubman, Marcus Garvey. These are folks who've given their lives. And so some of us who are in elected positions, we have enormous responsibility to make sure that the suffering and the ultimate death of many of our ancestors, you know, were not in vain. The responsibility enormous. And we must always remember that we're not just representing ourselves as individuals, but we're representing our families, our communities, and those who laid the foundation so that you and I can sit here and have a conversation, a civil conversation about history and life as it stands today. I think I'm also known for going back since 2010, when the horrific earthquake devastated Haiti. And one of the very first things I did on becoming a councillor was to, I co-founded Randolph for Haiti, which was a non-governmental organization dedicated to serving the needs of the Haitian community and Haitians in Haiti. And Randolph for Haiti, we sent three delegations of doctors and nurses and other professionals to Haiti with a number of truckloads of medical supplies, food, equipment, and so on. I also used the authority that I had here to extend the library hours and the town hours so that Haitians living here could get access to communication, to communicate with their relatives in Haiti and around the world because it was that much of a crisis. I also established an office space where residents were able to bring the medical supplies and the other urgent supplies that were needed. And so we had our own separate space to set up an office. So we gave it top priority because it was important for me and for us to do whatever we could do to ensure that we are there for our Haitian community here and our Haitian brothers and sisters in Haiti in their time of need. You know, I've also taken the opportunity to mentor a number of young Haitian professionals wishing to enter the police force. In fact, I supported very much the application of the very first Haitian police officer in Randolph, Haitian teachers and so on. Because the way he saw it was that everyone needs that opportunity. And it was more a matter of creating a level playing field so all our residents can get the chance to compete. I've also worked closely with a number of Haitian-based organizations, like the US Haitian Chamber. We've had a number of initiatives to support small and micro businesses, many of whom are owned by Haitians. I've worked with Madapen Tech out of Boston. Working together, we've brought services here to Randolph where our residents can take advantage of the free computer literacy classes.
As you mentioned about that, that would have been my next question. So you can go ahead and continue elaborate on it.
Wonderful, wonderful. So we recognize a number of our residents, including new immigrants. Some might not have had the chance to have been adjusted to life here. And so you understand how important technology is. So having an opportunity for folks who might have missed out, give them a second chance to have that skill, meant a lot to me. So I'm very grateful to Madapen Tech and organizations of that nature. I've also worked with close colleagues of mine who've worked for Webster's Bank to bring financial literacy workshops to help our students. to help our students. And equally important, the families, the parents of those students so that they could become more informed and more educated on some of these issues that would make us better and more productive citizens. So in summary, the Haitian community here plays a critically important role. I must say also, a number of years ago, for the first time, for the first, the month of May was formally recognized as Haitian Heritage Month here in the Randolph because I thought that it was the right thing to do. Haitians here, they play a critical role. And I understand that this was an important month. And so, I, as president of the council then, I used the opportunity to formally recognize that month and also to officially recognize the exceptional contribution that Haitians have made historically, socially, culturally, and so on, not only to our community of Randolph and greater Boston, but the entire country, to make people feel that they are valued because in fact, their contribution have been valuable. And so, it's an ongoing relationship. The water problems that we have, Haitians also benefit. Fighting the transfer station, Haitians also benefit. So on the major issues, all our residents benefit. But I just gave you some examples as to where, as to issues that were of specific interest and concern to Haitians living in Randolph.
Thank you, Ken, for, you know, the way you described, you know, your connection with the Haitian community and a lot of contribution, let's say, town of Randolph, helping, you know. I am original from Haiti and I am grateful, you know, after the earthquake, Haiti, you know, after this devastated earthquake. And you explain, you give example of things you put together, guys, in order, you know, to support people in Haiti and support people here in Randolph. That's really, you know, as a Haitian, I really, you know, admire and honor, you know, this, you know, wonderful job you guys have been doing, helping Haitians either resettle here and they can help their family back in Haiti. So all the viewers, you are listening to Dialogue with the Candidate. Dialogue with the Candidate, it's the platform MCTV offers to the candidate. They can come and talk about their plan and their agenda. We have with us, Mr. Ken Clifton. He's been talking about, you know, his experience as someone in the public service and what he has done and what he has accomplished and things he has done, especially in the town of Randolph. So now, we are at the end of the show. And we always give this opportunity to all the candidates who come here just to make their case for the viewers of MCTV and viewers all over Massachusetts, especially in Randolph. So, Mr. Ken, you have the opportunity to make your case for the viewers.
Thank you. Well, I think I have demonstrated that over the years, I have endeavored to work tirelessly in representing the interest of all of my constituents. And let me just clarify one quick point that I don't think myself or any of us are doing any favors to the Haitian community. We're doing our jobs. And Haitians make up a significant percentage of our constituents. So it's only normal for them to be beneficiaries of what we do. I believe that I have led from the front, whether it's the leadership I've shown in terms of trying to stop the Holbrook Transfer Station, or it's the thing that I've led from the front in terms of organizing this critically important water forum that we held to ensure that our residents' voice could be heard. Finally, I would be honored if my constituents would continue to give me their confidence and to support me on elections on Tuesday, November fifth, from seven o'clock in the morning to eight o'clock in the evening. And in my district, District One, the voting is at the high school. But most importantly, please go out and vote. Your vote is your voice and you should let your voice be heard. So thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Ken. So we have had with us Ken Clifton. He's running for seat, uh, town council in Randolph for District One. And the election, as you mentioned, gonna be on November fifth. And you have the chance to listen to his plan, his agenda, and what is he planning to do for the benefit of the town of Randolph. So once more, you are listening, you have been listening to Dialogue with the Candidate, which is a program with MCTV that brings to inform, to educate you about, you know, civic engagement and other stuff you need. When you go to vote, you will make an informed decision. So I am the host, Ronald Bernard, so I will see you for the next show. Thank you.